Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Norfolk County Commissioners' May 7th, 2025 meeting. We started a few minutes late because of traffic with the Karen Reed trial. We have to start with the executive vote on remote participation. On March 28th, 2025, Governor Moore Healy signed into law House 62 an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, master in law chapter 38, sections 18 through 25. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through June 30th, 2027. So at this time, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have two honored guests here today, Plymouth County Commissioner Greg Hanley and Senator Mark Pacico would ask them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, first item is a roll call. Commissioner Stady?
I am present via Zoom.
Yep. And I am also present. Unfortunately, our chairman, Joseph Shea, is out of state on county business, so I'm chairing the meeting for today. We have an executive session today? No executive session? Correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. You know, before we go into, well, even the minutes, Richard, do you have any problem with the minutes for the?
If they're all sent, I'll move approval as presented.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed unanimously. Okay, next, we have an appointment today with Plymouth County Commissioner Greg Hanley to speak about the Transatlantic Climate Conference at Bridgewater State University on May 22nd, 2025. He's here with Senator Mark Pacico, and this is of great interest to both of these individuals. If you'd like to both come up, that'd be great.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Temporary chairman.
Yeah, I can take it. Thank you for this opportunity. About two and a half years ago, Plymouth County entered into a sister county agreement with Donegal Island, and out of that came four conferences in two countries centered around economic development, tourism, and culture. For your information, I'll share with you, that is the cultural part. They were having a welcome dinner for the Transatlantic Climate Alliance. If you'll recall, the first conference we had was the Blue Green Economy Conference in the Shire Town of Plymouth, and we had a very successful event where we brought kelp farming to the attention of our coastal communities and the industries related with the processing and harvesting of kelp, believe it or not. We also had a great experience at the Patuxet Village, formerly known as the Plymouth Plantation, as part of our tourism piece, and our cultural piece was up in the Irishman's area in the town of Sitewitt, with the highest density of Irish in the country in that area of Plymouth County. So this is our second conference here in the other Shire Town of Brockton, and first, on the other side, is our welcome dinner for the Transatlantic Climate Alliance Conference, and that will be featured Ambassador Claire Cronin, who's now retired as the Irish Ambassador. She'll be recognizing the mayor of Donegal Island with the first ever Claire Cronin Award, as well as we're working with our Hibernian members as the nonprofit to name the Irishman and the Irishwoman of the year, and that'll be Mr. Creedon, who is the Clerk of Courts in Plymouth County, as well as Ambassador Cronin. So we're looking forward to having that. That's a kickoff dinner, and the greetings of the city of Brockton, our host community will be brought by the mayor, and it'll be a wonderful night. The next day is our Transatlantic Climate Alliance Conference, and today, we're here to ask you and the commissioners to join the Transatlantic Climate Alliance Council, and I'll let Senator talk about that more specifically. But for us as the county commissioners, we're looking to find what is the next thing that county government can do for our member communities. Back in September, I got permission to partner with Senator Pacico on the Transatlantic Climate Alliance, and since then, I've been working diligently with him to plan this conference, but along the way, I've been educated as to the opportunities that present themselves to our member communities. And specifically, one of our panelists is going to be the Department of Energy Resources, which will do a presentation on monies available through the state by way of Green Communities Act and grant money that's already in the budget that is exclusive of any federal monies. So why we're asking you to affiliate is to bring that much more credibility to the process, number one. Number two, we're looking to do this potentially on an annual basis with the five counties in mind. Right now, Bristol has agreed, Plymouth has agreed, Old Colony Planning Council, all by way of vote have agreed, as well as the city of Brockton. We're here to ask you for your vote to support that as a climate alliance ally and charter member of the council. So this is something, and I'll let the senator take it from here, that was started back in 2016 when the senator was the senator. He's now retired, and this is a passion and a program that he's now taking on full time. So with that, if Mr. Buckley could pull up the website, there's one particular announcement or a piece of the presentation that we'd like to have you listen to, and then the senator will take it there. And thank you for your time, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, if we could have, Mr. Buckley, if you could go to the news section of the website, and you can click on the first guy that might look a little familiar to everyone.
There's no voice with that, Bill.
Sorry, you can't hear it?
Yeah, there's no audio. We know it's Al Gore, but we don't know what he's saying.
Didn't he invent the internet?
How about now?
No.
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 Yeah, we're hearing something. If you could go a little louder.
All right, let's try our best.
Subnational level. And on a personal note, I want to applaud my good friend, Massachusetts State Senator Mark Pacico for leading this effort. Mark is one of the most protective and active leaders in the climate reality leadership corps, and I'm thrilled to see this effort come together under his initiative. In many parts of the world, subnational governments have become the standard bearers for climate action. In countries where national leadership has lagged, city, state, and regional leaders have often stepped up to take the lead. And in nations with ambitious funding goals, it is subnational governments that are leading the vital work of implementation, putting in place policies that are cutting emissions and growing the clean energy industries of the future. The governments and the leaders represented in this alliance are real pearl blazers. You are the guides that many other officials will learn from and follow. You've achieved early successes and have developed pragmatic solutions for some of the roadblocks that threaten to slow your progress. But even with all these efforts, we have to acknowledge that the climate crisis is still getting worse faster than we have yet implemented its solutions, and that's why the work of collaboration is so essential, because we know that this crisis is only going to be solved through collaboration. No single state or city or province can do it by themselves. We understand that. It's going to take all of us. And by sharing best practices, by discussing how to overcome challenges to progress and encouraging greater ambition among your peers, I'm very optimistic that this alliance will help to foster the kind of collaboration that is essential to the global efforts needed to solve the climate crisis, and we can solve it. I'm convinced we will. So let me once again congratulate you on the launch of this effort, and now let's get to work. Thank you.
Okay, if we could go to our work, Mr. Buckley? And I'll be very quick from here. This is, these are the major sectors that we're looking at as a Transatlantic Climate Alliance, looking at education and workforce development, green finance, the built environment, that's the existing built infrastructure that is out there in the transatlantic region of the world, adaptation and resilience issues, subnational climate leadership, the different forms of renewable energy that we have. If we can scroll down just a bit more, Mr. Buckley? And then we're looking at our oceans and how they can play a significant role, in particular with wave energy now, and what's coming out in that area, the transportation system, food and agriculture, and a sector that we will be putting up on the website as well, and that is the sector around healthcare. Because when you look at all the components of issues around pollution that contribute to significant health outcomes in a negative way, it's very important to know what we can be doing, even at the local level, to improve those initiatives. So the Transatlantic Climate Alliance is really an initiative that is looking at what's happening globally and acting locally. So cities, towns, regions of the transatlantic region of the world are really building off of good practices, best practices, that are taking place with climate action. We have the cities of Cascais, Portugal, for example. We have a board member, if you go down a little farther, Mr. Buckley, if you go down to see some of the board members here, but one of the board members all the way down the bottom here is JP Pundigast. He's from Ireland. We have a person by the name of Brian Atwood, who, Brian used to run USAID at the federal level in OECD, significant international experience as to what is happening. We have cities like Lowell that have already signed on. We have regions in the Azores that have signed on. We have people from, again, Ireland, Austria, Germany, you name it. Just yesterday, a group of people in the aviation industry just announced an initiative that they're doing relative to alternative fuels in aviation, because what they're seeing happening in turbulence issues that are occurring more frequently because of what's happening with the climate. So what we're really looking for is that vote saying that Norfolk County would be pleased to join as a founding member of the Transatlantic Climate Council of the Transatlantic Climate Alliance. And the council is made up of our work, the areas that I referenced earlier. And what we'll be doing is, on the 22nd of May, we'll be kicking off the first in what hopefully will be several regional initiatives in counties throughout Massachusetts, talking about specific areas that cities and towns, regions, school districts can learn about what other areas in the state and also in the transatlantic region are doing. In the area of agriculture, for example, in the area of resilience initiatives, in the area of clean energy technologies, not only what's happening with offshore wind, but also solar technologies, some of the new solar technologies that are emerging and coming out as new technologies that can actually beat the imports from China, believe it or not. It's going to be quite significant. And when you look at that region of the world, looking at Europe, going from Iceland all the way down to South America, there are a lot of great new technologies that are out there that are up, that are working, that people should be learning about in ways in which they can implement it right within their own districts, within their own political subdivision, to make a difference for the people that we all serve, the taxpayers here in Massachusetts. And that's what it's all about. It's really talking about collaboration, as the former vice president referenced. We can all learn from each other the best practices that are going on. And all cities and towns do not have the technical assistance budgets of places like Cambridge, or Somerville, or, you know, and the list goes on, where there are significant local budgets available. But this is really to focus on all those other cities and towns that are out there that really need somebody to bring a collaborative effort together to explain a lot about the how you get to implement some of these practices. That's what this is really all about. And I think it's going to be exciting if we can have all of our counties come together around this, and we can be having some countywide conferences that are focusing on specific areas, whether it's geothermal, or the newest solar technologies that are being implemented, and how to take advantage of some of the state funding that are available to try to help underwrite some of these initiatives at the local level. So that's what it's all about, and I thank you for the time.
Specifically, the conference itself will have three panels. One will be hosted by the city of Brockton and Old Colony Planning Council on a tech highway, so to speak, where clean tech will be invited into the space, and the bricks and mortar piece in the city of Brockton on redevelopment of some of their former manufacturing base, the repurposed buildings. They'll have a panel on that. The county of Donegal will come over and speak about anaerobic digestion and what was the one with the water, the hydrogen piece with the water. Forgive me, Ms. Chairman, for not?
I'm talking about geothermal.
Geothermal.
Geothermal, there's a, we may have a virtual presentation from the Azores, the mayor of Montauk Delgado, where they have over 40% of their energy is supplied through geothermal technology.
Wow.
And at the university at Bridgewater, they actually have a geothermal piece there that may be able to be put on at the end, a little tour for some of the conferencegoers if they wanted to see a little bit about what geothermal could look like.
That's great.
The last piece is with the county of Avon, a company called Divert from Freetown, right now manages all the food waste for the stop and shop facilities, empowers the entire operation down there with byproduct of methane that's generated from the digestives.
Yeah, they capture the methane. That's one of the things that in the agricultural sector, we have dairy farms, and that's another thing that can be, you know, brought together to help generate some revenue. But also, the most important thing is to try to bring down methane emissions. The EU, the UN, and back a while ago, the Biden administration actually signed on to an international agreement to lower methane emissions by 30%. And one of the significant ways to do that is through anaerobic digestion technology, looking at food waste that otherwise would go in a, which in Massachusetts, it's banned, but we, in terms of dumping food waste into the landfills. But we also have to have those companies that are developing the food products, that when they have some waste, we have to have them have a legal place to get rid of it. And in this case, it's not only a legal way to dispose of the food waste, but it's a way to actually bring down greenhouse gas emissions, in particular methane emissions, and also be able to provide alternative fuels for things like marine fuels to power some of the cargo ships and those types of things that can be done. So this is about educating the local officials about ways in which they can utilize their platform to try to help solve this most important crisis that's facing all of us.
So thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Senator. Our ask today is to get a vote of the commissioners to align themselves with this program and then to turn around and promote the conference to your member communities. It would be great benefit for them to participate actively on it. It's a conference that has no charge. There's 206 seats in the lecture hall at the Mokley Center at Bridgewater State. It'll be held Thursday, May 22nd, and that'll be from 9:00 AM to 2:00.
Wow, that's great. Richard, I had spoken to our chairman, Joe Shea, about this the other day, and he was all for it. Our budget is incredibly tight, and he was fine with joining the alliance with the provision that we not have to pay any money, at least for now, because we don't have any money. But your thoughts, Richard? What do you think?
Yeah, no, first of all, thank you, Senator and Commissioner, for coming in. It's great to see you both. I think it's a topic that I'm very, it's deep in my heart, I'm very green oriented, as Peter will attest to. I wanted to see if this lines up or conflicts with some of the ongoing green efforts we have, which you may not be aware of. Like, for example, we have a solar project that's been very busy at the Aggie School, and we're about to perhaps enter into an agreement on charging stations. So two of those green initiatives are already underway. I was looking at the PowerPoint that was sent to us, and then I looked, I listened to Senator Pacico carefully. It seemed like this is more of an educational type of alliance, at least initially, to kind of group people together and point people in the right direction. Am I reading this the right way, or is there something more not there yet?
Yeah, no, actually, Commissioner, you're pointing right to an example. Some of the initiatives that you're doing with solar?
Yeah.
Can be one of the good practices, the best practices that have happened, where we can use that to explain to other educational leaders what they can be doing at their school to try to move in the right direction.
Right.
Hold carbon emissions and get to the other side of the investment where it's actually going to be less expensive in the long run. So it's really about educating people, yes.
Could you take?
About best practices.
In fact, that's solar, you'll be intrigued by this. Real quick, but the solar company has got an idea that they're using UMass, and there's an educational component for the students at the Aggie School in terms of being able to grow enough foods that the sheep can graze underneath it. It's really a fantastic idea. Right now, unfortunately, it's tied up in litigation. Hopefully, we're getting that resolved very soon. But that's just one example there. The Mokley Conference, that's on the 22nd, I believe? That's at Bridgewater State?
Yes.
All right, I'm going to try to attend that. I'm going to try my best. I don't think I can make the 21st, just letting you know. We have, both of us, we have an Aggie board meeting that night. It's going to be tough for us to attend, which is unfortunate. But I'll do what I can on the 22nd. If Joe Shea, the chairman, has said he's okay with it, provided there's no cost, I got no problem moving it then today, just as long as there's no cost. We don't have any money at the moment. You know, things go, but why else will get involved with it, you know?
Yeah, there's no cost. And actually, one of the components that the chairman wanted me to, the chairman of Plymouth County wanted me to talk about just briefly, was about green finance, because how do you finance a lot of this stuff going forward? I'll give you an example in Taunton, with the Public Power Company, we actually brought together a lot of the banking institutions locally, and we worked with them to provide an opportunity to be able to replace oil and gas infrastructure in homes with heat pumps, and worked at a discount rate for replacing those heat pumps negotiated by the public power companies in the region, the Middleborough Gas and Electric and the Taunton Municipal Light Plant, along with a group of banking institutions that would provide the average citizen a zero interest loan for energy efficiency on their own homes. So they could go in and not only replace an HVAC system they were going to have to replace anyway, you know, an older oil heating system, for example, which would be at least, you know, in many cases, $20,000, and get that replaced with an alternative heat pump system. And while at the same time they're doing that, there's other types of things they want to do in their houses. Maybe it's doing an energy order, replacing windows, doing insulation, all of those things. Well, you need the technical work done upfront to get that done, because we work together and we had a green finance piece put together around that, and at the state level, we have a green bank. And so the green bank will participate with some projects if we have a project of merit that comes to the forefront in Plymouth County, Bristol County, or Norfolk County. You know, we could work and put together a project that will be a best practice statewide and throughout the region of Massachusetts and New England. And we can also learn, and by the way, this isn't just about Massachusetts, this is what we're doing right now. But I'll be meeting with Rhode Island regions, counties, I'll be meeting with all the New England states, and I'm doing this in, believe it or not, in Austria, in Germany, in Portugal, in different places. And it's amazing when you go out and you start to take a look at the new technologies that are out there, the exciting future that lies ahead for those of us that are aware of what's going on. So this is about bringing that awareness to the very local elected officials that can make a difference. And thank you very much, Commissioner.
Mindful of your time, Ms. Chairman. We thank you for the opportunity to present today and hope that you can affiliate, and we'll look forward to seeing you guys on the 22nd.
Richard, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, there's no, as I said, there's no cost and no conflict with what we're doing. So I think it'd be great to join the, oh, God help me, the Transatlantic Climate Group?
Transatlantic Climate Council of the Transatlantic Climate Alliance.
Well stated. We'll make that part of my motion.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's a passed motion. So thank you, Senator.
Thank you very, very much.
Nice to see you, guys. Talk to you soon. See you again.
Commissioner Hanley, I hope that the next time the vice president does his presentation that he mentions your name.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming in today.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mark, I'll see you around.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Take care. You're welcome.
All right, so we're going to move on to item six, Richard, which is public comment. Every week during our meeting, we have public comment. Anyone that is zooming in today is invited to make a short statement. So I welcome that at this time. Not hearing anyone requesting public comment. I refer it back to the Assistant County Director. Has anyone mentioned that they wish to be heard at public comment today?
Not today, sir.
Okay, we're going to move on to item seven, then. Old business, any old business, Bill?
There is none, sir.
Okay, personnel matters for consideration. Richard, do you have all that?
I do. I'm very happy to move the Wallace recreational facility. I'll move the following. The notice to rehire, I have two individuals, Cecile Eli and Edward Rodney McDevitt, both seasonal golf associates, and the rate stated, the effective date for both are the same, 5/8/25, so moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed unanimously. And the next is, keep going, Richard, sorry.
Right. I move notice of rate change and title change for Michelle Culler Jr. as seasonal golf pro. The rate stated, effective date, 5/1/25, so moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed unanimously. Next item?
Final one at the Wallace recreational. I'll move notice of resignation of David Payne as seasonal golf associate, for rate stated, effective date of resignation, 4/18/25, so moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously.
Norfolk County Agricultural School, Mr. Chairman, I move the following. Notice of address change for Lisa Garrett as substitute teacher. Notice of address change for Lisa Garrett as substitute teacher. I said, just effective date of the address change, 4/24/25. So moved.
Second, all in favor say aye.
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 We have two. I'll move together. Notice of contingent employment of Gabriella Pannon and Abigail Van as student labor, marketing, labor communications, rate stated, effective date for both, 5/8/25. So moved.
Second, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed unanimous. Okay, the next item was the payroll and expense warrants for approval. Richard, I have them. I'm not sure if you have them.
Do not have? Go ahead, please.
Okay, so, so the first item on the warrant list is 25-44 payroll, the county in the amount of $151,493.9. So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed unanimous. Okay, the next item is 5/1/25 expense of the county in the amount of $88,621.65. So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Next item, 5/2/25 Waltham Recreational Facility credit card payment in the amount of $25,597. So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Terrific. That ends the payroll and expense warrants. Item 10 is a report from the procurement department for bid openings and contract awards. Are there any of that today?
Nothing today.
Okay, moving on to item 11, report of the county director through the assistant county director.
Through Mr. Acting County Commissioner Chair, I have just three quick things this afternoon. I want to just update some of the work that our maintenance department is doing. As you know, they're constantly working not only to clean our court buildings and our other county facilities, but to maintain them and to improve them. So over the weekend, at the end of last week, in Stoughton District Court, the civil clerk's office, the trial court purchased some new furniture. So they were moving things around and the electrician and custodians worked over the weekend to rewire some things, move some outlets as well to update that space. Jofini is working on bracing in the front counter area to improve that as well. The Stoughton HVAC unit was completed by industrial burner systems. It's up and running. There's an A.C. unit plug he added in courtroom 25 for the Kent retrial for those large televisions that they put in the courtroom, which I believe will stay there beyond that trial. So that's just an improvement to courtroom 25 over at Superior. The crane was here on Saturday, swapping the HVAC units at Dedham District. Everything went well, was cleaned up in a timely fashion. We got reports. I know Commissioner Stady was able to attend. Law Day at Superior went very well. I believe they rescheduled the one in Quincy for a later date, and we're looking forward to that on the list. So those are just a kind of a quick snapshot of the work that the guys have been doing over the last few weeks here in the county complex over in Stone. So that's number one. Number two, just a point of information. We bring this up from time to time. We have, as you know, a great new R S A P director, and one of the great programs we have is the Rides for Vets program. And perennially, it's such a good program, it's so popular, that we don't have enough retired senior drivers. So I just want to take this opportunity to kind of remind folks that it's a program that funded by the commissioners and a grant from AmeriCorps Seniors, rides for vets drivers who need to be at least 55 years of age, use their own vehicles and have the option to be reimbursed for travel-related expenses at 40 cents per mile up to 300 miles per month. We have a number of great friendly drivers that take veterans principally to their medical appointments. But the need of veterans and the, the positive feedback from the program is so great that we continue to have a larger and larger increase in desires for rides. So one of the things we're going to do is probably dust off the periodic press release we do in a lot of the local papers just to encourage people to think about signing up to become a driver. We're remapping that portion of the website as well, making it a little nicer and more appealing. But just want to put it on people's radar that it's a great program. And as always, you know, some people phase out, some people phase in as drivers. We're always looking to aggressively recruit drivers for this really wonderful program. And my final piece is just to flag, understanding that you guys have had a lot of additional meetings as trustees with the, with the superintendent search. We also know next week is at the Aggie, our final vote on the FY26 budget with the advisory board. On Monday at 10:00 AM, we will have a quick commissioner meeting to to consider all final transfer requests and the like. So we, I just want to flag that for your calendars because I know there's so many moving parts this, you know, the season of May of graduations and school events as well. So other than that, that's all I have.
And town meetings, let's not forget.
Oh, and Kent town meeting is Monday night.
A lot of town meetings, right. We're all starting, so.
Throw it mine on this Monday. We managed to survive through just a single night, thank God.
There you go.
Richard, I know we said this before we started the meeting, but just for, on the meeting purposes, we have your permission to use your stamp today?
It's fine. Yep, that's fine. It is.
Perfect, problem was taken.
Whatever's needed. Yeah, sure.
Okay, on to item 12, emergency items, topics that the chairman did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. Do you have anything? Okay, so item 13 is adjournment, Richard.
All right, nice job. I'll move adjourn at 1:44.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, and Richard, I'll see you tonight.
Yeah, yeah. See you at the Aggie very soon.